Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the crime-free housing ordinance task force meeting. Your order?
It's not on.
Hello? Hello?
Gentlemen, if you have more questions, please do. Let's get away. In the meantime, we'll start with Speaker Brown.
Okay, I'm going to just speak up a little bit.
It's being recorded, but we just don't have the sound on.
Okay, our first order of business is roll call of members. I'm Alderman Ken Consala. Treasurer Dean Hart just went off to work on the speaker system. Kevin Mouse?
Here.
Linda Havlin?
Here.
John Maser? We have not heard from John, I expect you will be here. Dan Newman?
Here.
Tricia Tyelba?
Here.
And Mayor Ackley?
Here.
I'd like to also mention that today we have sitting in with us Eric Horner, the city attorney, and Bob Sabo for the housing, and Lieutenant Iskem, police force, and the chief's back there too, the assistant chief. We have a whole lot of people here tonight. The next order of business is now on here, I'd like to stand and say what your lead is.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we're supposed to have our public hearing, but because the sound's not on, it might be hard to get everyone recorded, so I'm suggesting that I go through the most recent draft and point out some housekeeping things that we had to improve on. If you have a copy, it's been on the website sometime, but how many people in the audience have a copy? I'll give you a just a few. Okay, I'll try not to keep this too long on this thing. I have nothing on page one, on page two. It starts with the number two, two members, it's a partial paragraph. The third line down. At a minimum of two times per year, at least six months apart, and more often as needed, or more often as needed, or more often as needed, we're adding the three words, more often. By the way, committee members, if you find something as we're voting, please jump in. I have nothing for page three or four. Nothing on five. On page six, the first paragraph, A, at the end of the paragraph, the last sentence is, this is at the end of A, "The owner, landlord, or managing agent may conduct this search, or may have a reputable agency conduct this search at," I think the words his or her should be longer, rather than "at own expense," at his or her own expense. It's just a housekeeping thing, but I think that's perfect. Also, at the end of that, "at his or her own expense," period, "a fee may be incurred," should be included there because we have it after B, the last sentence of B is "a fee may be incurred," and we'd like to put that in A also. "A fee may be incurred." Okay, I'm going to move on. I have nothing on six, on seven. About four inches down, after the number four, there's a new paragraph that starts with "any violation," and I'll read that since we're going to have some time here. "Any violation of the above provisions shall be a material and irreparable violation of the rental agreement and good cause for termination of tenancy and recovery of the leased premises." And behind leased premises, we're going to put in parentheses, "rental unit," because that's what we've done in other places. It's just behind premises, before the period, we put in parentheses, "rental unit," both capitals.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, was the board immediate removed on exception?
I'm sorry, it was not, I misread. Thank you. That's what happens to old reading teachers. Page eight. Thirty-three, three, dash, eighteen. It starts about an inch down. Go to A three on there, A three, and it refers to the crime-free rental agreement addendum, attachment B. Someone said that that's supposed to be C. Do we have, did someone confirm that? Because I don't remember what order they were in, and I went through my packet and messed them up, so I think it's supposed to be attachment to the C.
Right.
It is C, okay. So we'd like to change that right there in three, A three. And then down at the very bottom of the page, just about above the number eight, we have attachment B, that should be attachment C. This is just housekeeping, but we want to be correct. Now, it's at the very bottom of page eight, where it says, "attachment B."
R is on top of page three.
Oh, okay, sorry.
There's so many different versions.
There's quite a few versions, yes. Now, on page nine, about the middle, two-thirds of the way down the page, B, "Suspension of the owner, landlord, or managing agent's crime-free housing certificate or up to ninety days." Up to goes between R and ninety. So up to ninety days, R, up to sixty days. So the words up to go between R and ninety, and again between R, R, and sixty. Is everybody cat that's? Anybody lost?
I'm lost. We're attached.
Okay, we're on page nine, B, "Suspension of the owner," and it's the second line, we need the words "up to" between R, that would be up to ninety, and after R, up to sixty. Do you have?
I think I've got it.
An old copy, I'm sorry. Also, following that, it says, "R sixty days after completion of corrupted action, whichever is longer." We don't need whichever is longer, so we're going to drop whichever is longer out there. We might as well go on and finish this so that everybody knows. On page ten, under separability, page ten, it's about a quarter of the way down the page under section three, there's a blank before the year 2017, and if things go as planned, that blank would be filled in with October 31st. So it's October 31st, we're going that way. Now, there are also some cleanup items that are being done to some of the attachments. The ones that have this top part with the Belville All-America City underneath, we're moving that over so that it can be printed on one piece of paper instead of two. But that's just a housekeeping thing, that's not a real problem for most of us. And I believe there's another one on the crime-free rental addendum. Then again, that heading is going to be changed so everything appears on one piece of paper. And it will, that page fifteen, another addition to that is an address of the rental unit that was left off the political eight there for address of rental unit. Now, the great majority of changes that have been made did not change the content of this proposal, but it is, and we're sorry that it takes so long to get one through, but we want to be correct. Okay. Yes, Alderman Schneider.
We're supposed to be having a meeting with a copy of it in front of us that we're going to, well, we won't be voting on it tonight, but it will come before council. Will, when it comes before council, will we have a correction? How many of the people of the audience have how many different drafts? I mean, when we were following this through, I mean, one's got one thing, another's got another thing, so.
Okay, all.
Is this?
Yes.
I guess the attorney, I should ask this question, is this okay to be given, everybody different drafts?
May I answer that question? Okay. You are attending a meeting of the crime-free housing task force. We're the ones that polish it up and hand it on, so that's what we're doing, we're polishing it up. When you get it, it will be right, okay? This is still, no, this is still a working document, we're working on it, yeah. And as such, it's not meant to be perfectly believed, it hasn't been, it has come out. Okay, at this time, we'll open a public hearing on the final draft of the crime-free housing ordinance. If you'd like to speak, I'd ask that you keep your time to about two minutes because we have a pretty full crowd.
(inaudible). I do think that, and I'd like to hear the city attorneys, in fact, we're opening up a public hearing, there's multiple drafts out there, does that, I'm asking the city attorney, I mean, does that hurt us from a public hearing point of view, the fact that we don't know who has what drafts, who, are they really speaking in a public hearing, or what is the final draft being presented this time?
Chairman Consala did note that the changes that have been made aren't substantive, they were housekeeping matters, but some of them was typographical, and of course, the document is subject to change based upon the comments, based upon what the aldermen do, but no, this is, it's not uncommon for a committee to have a working document, to have a public hearing, and he properly announced what the changes were, they're really not substantive, they were just corrected.
Thank you. Okay, if someone would like to speak, the ground rules are, we'd like you to keep two minutes, and when you get up, we'd appreciate it if you'd announce your name and your address for the record. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Rick Brown, 25, the CLA, Shiloh, own a lot of property in Belleville. I think there's a possibility here that the changes that were made, and the changes that might be made after this, are going to require another public hearing. I think Illinois state law, not as attorney, but I did stay at a Holiday Inn Express last night, and I believe it requires another public hearing. Crime-free housing ordinance, doesn't that sound great? Why don't we have a cancer-free ordinance for Belleville? Wouldn't that be even better? Outlaw cancer? You know, you've got a report in front of you, you've gotten letters from the Schreiber, Sergeant Schreiber Center on Poverty Law, that have legal sites in it on how much trouble the city can get in for passing this ordinance the way it is. You are requiring us as landlords to violate the Fair Housing Act. Doesn't anybody here have a reverence for the Constitution and federal law? You are requiring us to evict people for merely getting a ticket, not for being convicted or not for pleading guilty. The Constitution guarantees, says that the, a person is innocent until proven guilty or he pleads. That's the law. We cannot evict somebody for merely having a rental incident report written up on a piece of property. A first-year law student knows that. When you vote for this, you're voting on unconstitutional issues to be carried out by a private party, a landlord. I'm against crime, get rid of all the crime, which good police work is how you get rid of crime, not this kind of garbage. But let me tell you what this ordinance is about. In the United States, the black population is 13.7 percent. In Illinois, it's 14.8 percent, and in Belleville, it's 25.4 percent. The renters, in Illinois, 25 percent of them are white, 59.1 percent of them are black, 38 percent of the Hispanic population rents. In the USA, in the total country, 41.8 percent of renters include non-elderly disabled people, and 31.6 percent overall. This is what this is, this is a, this is a numbers ordinance. You guys already write 53.14 percent of the tickets to 25.4 percent of the violation of, to, of the population, which are black.
Mr. Brown, could you bring it to the floor?
I'm bringing it to the floor. You know, there's a lot of people in this audience that don't care about the Constitution and don't care about the law, but anything that we do, you know, criminals bust their heads, I got no problem with that, but do it in the right way and don't do it unconstitutional. Belleville has got a real problem. Belleville has become the Selma, Alabama of the North. We have a mayor who's the George Wallace of this city, and you're using these ordinances to discriminate against African-Americans in particular. Sir, you are a racist, and I can prove it.
My name is John Reichert, and I have an office at 1912 North Bell East. I've lived in Belleville all my life. I grew up on the West End, I reside in the East End. My mother lives in the West End, and I visit her all the time. I think what this ordinance is really about, and within the Constitution, are one of these documents that make America great, is the pursuit of happiness, and that happiness comes from people caring about their property and people caring about their neighbors. Currently, I'm renovating a property at 600 South Church, and when I drive to 600 South Church, I see the St. Clair County drug mag unit truck parked on McKinley Avenue, the nuisance unit, and the reason it's there is because something's going on wrong. My daughter just moved out of Fairview Heights, but before she moved in, she had to go and file with the city, and she had to state who she was, and she had to sign a release so they could do a background check on her. We're just looking to make sure that people care about the community and care about their neighbors. We need a crime-free rental housing ordinance to make sure that we have a good, solid community, and people take care of their property, the tenants and the landlords. Thank you.
Rose Wilson, 322 West Ice Street. I'd like to correct Mr. Brown. First of all, I'm really, really tired of him playing the race card, and to call the mayor a racist is, yeah, you can look at me, you are hateful, spiteful man. Hateful, spiteful. Honey, you play the race card, so I'm asking you, you have rental properties, how many African-Americans have you rented to in the past and currently?
Excuse me, excuse me. During public comment, we would like your opinions, and we're not going to ask questions. I'm sorry.
Okay, Mr. Brown says that we're violating the Constitution. Okay, so I guess Granite City is violating the Constitution, O'Fallon is violating the Constitution, Collinsville is violating the Constitution, and whatever other cities adopted the crime-free housing. Mr. Brown, if you live in a house, and you have your whole life's work in it, and you have units in your proximity that people do not take care of, the, if we talk about the landlords, the owners are vested in their streets as well, and we can't, we can't even sell the homes in our street for health of what they worth, and I am absolutely, positively a proponent for crime-free housing. You want the officers, you want more officers, you want, you want, you want, but you're not willing to give the officers the tool that they need, and they need it. Thank you.
My name is Mike Isner, and I also have a building here in Belleville, and the question I had was along the lines of, we need to take prompt, you know, immediate termination. Now, if, I've been through this process before, and it can take up to ninety days, simply having to get like, I've had ten or two I had to get rid of, so I would have to give them a five-day notice, and there's like a certain gyration, you have to go through the cores, you have to have certain papers and things like that, so my question is along the lines of, how will you define immediate, you know, prompt attention to the matter of getting rid of a problematic tenant? I think it's not really said.
We will bring that up in discussion, thank you. Yes?
Victoria Whitehead, 605 South Pennsylvania Avenue. I am for the crime-free housing. I think it's extremely important to the city of Belleville to give our officers the tools they need to keep Belleville a safe place to live for everybody who lives in it. During the recession, a many neighborhoods were hit hard by homes that went foreclosed, and a lot of those homes got bought out by landlords, and so, you know, from my situation, you know, I used to have no rentals across the street from me, and now I have about five. So this is very important to me, because I don't want to think that the person living across the street from me is, you know, any kind of criminal. We don't need that in our neighborhoods where children are playing, and people are trying to, you know, increase their property value. I think property values are hard-hit during these times, so we need to keep that up. I, last week, talked to a police officer who told me that the Granite City, you know, program has been phenomenal for their department, and that's what we need. We need to give our police the tools to keep our city a good place to raise children and have families. Thank you.
Patrick Hickey, 127th South Douglas. Just an overview from kind of a business perspective. Many may know I'm a Belleville licensed electrician, and many people might work for our here tonight, and I know it's somewhat unpopular with them just for the procedures of having to go through a few more hoops to conduct our business, but as a Belleville electrician, I each year have to submit to the city the request to continue my business. I provide insurance, bonding, copy of my annual report, and make an application to reapply to be an electrician in the city of Belleville. Lawyers have to answer to the bar, doctors have to answer to the AMA, I don't know hardly any profession that does not have a governing body that oversees their conduct. If Belleville is good enough to come to town, buy property, make money, survive on, pay your bills, it's good enough to be a licensed businessperson to conduct and handle the property in just what seems to be just a fair manner, strictly, it's just a common sense business. If you're going to make money on it, you're in business, and you need to conduct it as a business. I absolutely support it, I've supported it for years, if something that's needed to be done, it's long overdue, so, you know, I know it's unpopular, but I think in the sense of business structure, it's absolutely needed. Thank you.
My name's Cindy Kubicek, and I'm a resident of Belleville, not Shiloh, for a surrounding community. I'm a landlord also, and I am definitely for crime-free housing. We don't need any more armed robberies in Belleville, we don't need any more home invasions. We need crime-free housing, and I think it's extremely important. The surrounding communities have it, and they're doing very well, and I know that our community will do well with it as well, and I really think that this has to be in place for our city to continue to thrive and survive. Thank you.
Kevin Fernandez, 711, a bend. You know, I, I am somewhat in favor of this, but I don't believe that having crime-free housing is going to stop criminals. We're not going to stop them from being in Belleville. It's going to happen, no matter where you're at. We have an apartment building with seventeen units, and we've had two or three calls in the last twenty years. I'm not sure why we should have to pay $25 per unit each year for something we don't need. We do our due diligence, we do our background checks, we ensure that who we rent to are good renters. So why is it that I should be penalized? Because maybe there's criminals, and there's going to be criminals, no matter where you go or where you're at. It's going to happen. You're not going to stop crime. If we did, we could, look at all the money we could save. Sorry, chief, you'd be without a job there, but, you know, I mean, that'd be wonderful. It's not going to happen. I don't know the legality of this law, I'm not a lawyer, but I don't feel that I should be burdened with the expense of trying to evict someone because they've received a conviction of a felony or misdemeanor, what have you. If that individual, I feel, is someone who has maybe made amends, paid their debt to society, and I choose to rent to them, that should be my prerogative. If, at the time of my, their lease expiration or rental expiration, I choose not to renew that, I can do that. That's my prerogative. You know, I have more rental property across the street directly from my house, I want the neighborhood to be good. We're one of the people who called and said, you know what, bring down your drug task, whatever that mobile is, and put it out there on McKinley, because we want things to be better. But I don't feel that government intruding on what an individual does with their own property is the proper thing to do. Thank you. Excuse me, for the record, I'd like to mention that John Maser's entering the meeting. Welcome, John.
Patty Gregory, resident of Belleville, for Rain Tree Woods on the West End, and first of all, Mr. Brown, you don't live in Belleville. You have no idea what, how our properties are being affected by this. Mr. Fernandez, you're talking about the cost to the landlords? What about the cost to the homeowners and the, also, the renters that live in apartments and units where other people are not being good neighbors? I spoke to a gentleman today who has had problems over on Lebanon Avenue, where the neighbor, neighbors that are renting their children, and I shouldn't even say children, they're eighteen, nineteen, twenty years old, are urinating in the yard. They have asked these people to stop urinating in the yard, and then they are cursed out by the people in the rental unit. Now, where do the property rights of homeowners also come into play on this? And Mr. Fernandez is talking about $25 per unit? We are losing hundreds of thousands on our houses because of this, and I think, and I agree with Rose Wilson, this is not a race issue. This is an issue of stabilizing our community and our neighborhoods. We don't care what color you We don't care what color you are, what religion you are. We want things cleaned up. And unfortunately, Mr. Fernandez, in every occupation, there's a few that cause issues for all the good people. And that's just the way it is. And I think that this crime-free housing has got to pass. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address us? Yes.
Michael Hackworth, 701 Centerville. First, I want to say, don't base your opinion on this ordinance by the title alone. Everybody is for crime-free housing. You need to read the details. This is not a three-strikes-and-you're-out ordinance. We will not have that. You will still have to go through the long and arduous eviction process to get somebody out. Nobody's saying that you got three strikes, we're locking the door, and your stuff's on the front lawn. It's not gonna happen. There aren't good points in this when you read the detail. Part of it is the rental incident form. I believe that all landlords should register their property with the city, and if the police are called to that property, the landlord should be notified. That way, we can identify the bad landlords and punish them. We should penalize the few, not everyone. Next is that people are talking like, if we pass this, all of a sudden, our crime rates are gonna go down. Chief Clay gave a presentation with PowerPoint and 25 or 30 slides showing that Belleville crime is no different than surrounding communities. The surrounding communities have this. It hasn't affected their crime. And last is that you would think that robberies and home invasions are only done by people renting in Belleville. It's not true. There are homeowners that are here. There are people that come from out of town. This is not gonna affect them. Thank you very much.
My name is Zach Schmoak. I'm with Metropolitan St. Louis Equal Housing Opportunity Council. We've looked at this ordinance, and we think that there are some good motivations behind it. But the problem that we have with these types of ordinance is one of the primary problems we have is that they tend to take a one-size-fits-all approach to these kind of problems. And I've dealt with this ordinance in Granite City, or not this ordinance, but similar ordinance in Granite City. I've dealt with similar ordinances in the city of St. Louis and other municipalities. And what we see is that even if there's a good intention behind passing these laws, this one-size-fits-all approach takes up a whole bunch of people who you're really not intending to get to. The number-one area where this is a concern is victims of domestic violence. And what we've seen again and again is that, whatever the law is, landlords know that there's a pressure on them if there's a crime at their property. So they tell their residents, don't call the police no matter what. And that really puts victims of domestic violence in a bad position. There's a case, New York Times ran an article about it the other day in Norristown, Pennsylvania, where because of one of these types of ordinances, the victim of domestic violence was afraid to call the police because she didn't want to lose her housing. And she ended up being attacked and stabbed by her ex-boyfriend because he came to the property. She didn't want to call the police and create a disturbance, so she got the worst result there. Another thing that I've seen personally dealing with Granite City, you know, people with mental disabilities sometimes have problems. Sometimes they're serious problems, and it's fair to take action against them. Sometimes it's minor misdemeanors. And I personally have dealt with cases where, under these crime-free ordinances, a landlord who has an obligation that the fair housing act to make reasonable accommodations when there is that disability-related incident have been unable to make those accommodations because of these laws. So I don't know that there's a way to properly tailor these laws to make them really approachable so that if there is a legitimate defense, there's a venue for that. I know that this committee has made certain attempts, particularly with that domestic violence area, to address that. But my fear is that whatever the city puts out from the committee, from the council, when it gets tailored down to the landlords, they're the ones who ultimately bear the burden. They're the ones who are putting their business on the risk by attempting to brand a reasonable accommodation or to deal with a particular concern of a person who is a victim of domestic violence. So I think this ordinance is problematic in general. But I think the particular ordinance that we're looking at today still does not really address those concerns for people who might have legitimate exceptions to these kind of crime-free ordinance policies.
Thank you, sir. Could I ask you to spell your last name just?
Sure. It's S.C.H.M.O.O.K.
Thank you.
My name is Kevin Kubicek, 711 Anixon, Belleville. I am an attorney, as the gentleman said, and a previous gentleman. I would like to address those, first of all, in order of protection. Typically, the person who is accused of domestic battery is not allowed to be in the premises or within 500 feet of the premises. So law takes care of part of that. With respect to the American Disabilities Act, reasonable accommodation and defenses to that, I believe that in what version I read of the ordinance or the proposed ordinance, is that you're entitled to have all civil affirmative defenses that you might be able to plead against whatever you're charged with, so that would at least allow you to do that. Having said that, and I know this is gonna be unpopular, I'm in favor of what is being attempted to do, which is to make the landlords really accountable. I'm a landlord. I've been a landlord since 1987. And I know a lot of the things that Mr. Brown said are not popular here, and I've heard the gallant comment to that. But I would respectfully remind Belleville what happened 24 years ago with the 60 Minutes matter and the consent decrees that Belleville had to enter into because of the way either de facto or de jure things were done in this town. And I'm telling you, as an attorney, and I think Mr. Hernan will agree with me, if you attempt to just evict people and get them out without due process of law, without a hearing where they're able to defend themselves, I can guarantee you, you will have lawsuits coming down on them like a plague. So I'm not exactly sure, having read it, what it requires in terms of due process, and whether you're gonna set up a municipal court to attend to these things as opposed to putting it into the circuit court. But I'm guaranteeing you, if you're gonna enforce this, you're gonna have more than the courts here are gonna be able to take care of. And if you don't answer them, you're gonna have other suits in state and in federal court. And I'm saying that not in derogation of what we're trying to do here, but in recognition of, if you don't, before you pass it, address that and make sure that that's a part of it, it's gonna happen.
My name's Cheryl Compton. I live at 2340 Parkland Boulevard in Shiloh, and I'm employed as the executive director of Call for Help. And in that capacity, I work with a lot of homeless people that we have worked to help them turn their lives around and be able to go out and rent property and live as much as we do. I've read the Schreiber letters that you've been sent and that have suggested that this ordinance could possibly have some unintended consequences. And so while I'm not totally in disagreement with what you're trying to do, I would ask that the committee that you're putting together, the Oversight Committee, that you put one person from the St. Clair County Continuum of Care on that committee because that would help us ensure that there are no unintended consequences for the victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, persons who are mentally ill, who are trying to live in the community. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
My name is Mary Reiser. I live 601 South Jackson Street. My husband and I have lived there for 36 years now. Of course, we've seen changes in our neighborhood. We've seen it in the state. We've seen it in Belleville. We're not unique. We're like every other place in the country. But I think being very simplistic and not repeating what other people have said. Do we work on it? I don't know. Does it seem that way? At times. But the people who are in charge of it that know are the mayor and his people who are well aware of it, and they feel this is something that we need to do this up. Our policemen need help because just in our neighborhood, neighborhoods around, they're worn out from so many calls. And they want people to call. They don't want us to go out in the street and get in an argument with somebody or go next door where there's a domestic problem. We call the police. And it's my understanding, if this passes, there's more money for more policemen. And we might not like that concept, but at least we're going to be known as a town that's not going to tolerate anything worse than what is already going on in this country. And I'd like to say, Shiloh might need more policemen from here on.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address?
Scott Crumbberger, 9305 Circle Drive. I've lived in Belleville, excuse me, I've lived in Belleville my 42 years. Lived on East End for 23, the West End for the rest. But I love this town. I'm a landlord of several properties. About four years ago, I lost my job at Chrysler, and I bought up, started buying some properties, got an investor to help me. And they're all in Belleville and Swansea. Most of them are in Belleville, only two in Swansea. But I think you're gonna have problems with whatever you do, you know, with this crime-free ordinance. You're gonna have glitches. But I think it's a good thing for the city. And I think the main thing we want is safety. I mean, I've got a lot of tenants that are concerned about safety, number-one issue. And I can see it. I've got a lot of property between 1st and 15th Street, the north side. And two of my tenants right now are moving out because of the fact that there's cops all the time, and there's always problems. And I think as far as the cost goes with the $25 fee, I think in the long run, the landlords will actually benefit from that and make more money on rent, because the safer neighborhood, the more you can ask for rent. I believe, you know, I've been in this for 25 years, what some of you. But just, you know, a safer neighborhood, you can just ask more for rent. It's that simple. And it's definitely not a black or white issue. And, sir, I respect your opinion. But unless you've lived in Belleville your whole life, or you've lived in Belleville, you don't understand what we're doing. And it's one of those things where I've ridden my bike down the streets when I was a kid, and I felt safe. Granted, there was a bar on every corner. But that's one thing that's changed. You can take, you know, example from that. Belleville's, I don't know if it's Belleville or who, but there seems to be a lot less bars in Belleville now than there used to be. And I remember as a kid seeing a lot of rhinos running around the streets. But I don't see that anymore. But there's different kinds of crime now. But I think it's a good thing. I don't know all the details, you know, that could, I'm sure it's gonna hurt me financially. And, you know, there could be some other things I may not agree with, but I think it's a good thing in the long run. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's Walter Hood, Jr. I live at 5 Henry Court. I'm for the crime-free housing. I think it should be a little stronger. I live right next door to an apartment complex. There's a lot of stuff going on over there. So a lot of people that's not for it. I live it every day. So I think something needs to be done. And I don't think you'd look anything like George Wallace.
Yes, sir.
My name's Kevin Gigan. I'm at 124 Lucinda on the East End. I'm in favor of this ordinance. I believe that Belleville is a changing community. It's changing racially. Everybody admits to that. But I think it's also changing in another demographic. We're seeing people age. People are older, and when they go to sell their houses or when their kids move out, they're moving somewhere else. That's a problem. We need to encourage homeownership in Belleville. And nothing does that better than maintaining property values. I think it's an important thing for the city to have this type of ordinance. Maybe there are some things that need to be sanded down, and maybe we ought to treat the landlords who are residents better than those speculating companies that come in from outside the area. On our own street, there are eight people living in a two-bedroom home with one bathroom. And it was piece property that was bought following a bank foreclosure. That's the type of thing that, there may be laws on books now that can control that. But I think we still need to, there needs to be, as another speaker said earlier, a policing mechanism for the business of renting property. And I think this is a great first step. I think there are a lot of other things the city can do. But I moved here, my family moved here, my wife and I, our three kids, about 27 years ago. We moved here from the Cogia Centerville area. And we did that because Belleville offered better schools and safer neighborhoods. And it still has better schools and safer neighborhoods. And I want my black friends from Centerville and Cogia and East St. Louis and Washington Park to be able to come to Belleville and live that way also. So I think this is an important thing, and we're very much in favor of it.
Yes, sir.
Lee Griffin, 305 Lock Charles Street. Anybody who's against crime-free housing has to be against motherhood. But this crime bill is not gonna be a panacea that's affecting everybody. We don't wanna create more problems than what we're already having. Right now, we're in a dire straits situation. You guys want crime-free housing? I want drug-free communities. That's gonna be a correlation between drugs and crime. Until we deal with judges on drugs, until we deal with that judicial cesspool over there, we're gonna have problems. As long as we're dealing with a housing department that's not integrated, that don't even have a black paper pusher, but we're trying to validate housing by selectively harassing minorities, victims of domestic violence, we're gonna have problems. Everybody knows Belleville has some been minority-friendly. And this is not about the race score. It's about reality. Belleville has approximately 400 employees. I'll get that number on a 26th African-American. Belleville for 175 years, the first 175 years, pride themselves on never hiring minorities. Even at the county level, 1,058 employees, 22 department heads, one African-American, and she's on her way out, and probably for good reason. So I'm thinking, fools rush in, bring industry at light. You know, you're talking about running background checks on our own kids now. I mean, that's being too paternalistic. We gotta slow down, smell the coffee. What we need to be concentrating some of our energies on is dealing with some of these youths with their pants sagging. Get some youth programs. Get some YMCA programs. Get some job incentive programs, because I don't care if it's a zebra. If you're out here and don't have nothing to do, idle time is the devil's playground. We're gonna have crime. But to pass all these bills, and I respect everybody in here, it's not gonna be the solution. It's gonna make us laugh and stop. Bible man is gonna be blasting you guys tomorrow. Let's stop and think. What can we do for the homeless people? What can we do to really get to the core of the problems? Hire policemen? That's a great thing. But a lot of people thinking that because it's more minority share, it's crime, so we play the boogeyman card to get more money. And then we do things that's not appropriate. Let's do it the right way. Let's take a look at this situation. Let's be inclusive, because I still believe that as far as Belleville, the best is yet to come. But please realize, as long as we got judges on drugs, people in the probation department on drugs, nobody want to push. I haven't heard everybody say, hey, let's everybody take a drug test. Good government calls for sober government. So all the police is ain't gonna do no good as long as we got judges on drugs, and they're making decisions. How can a judge judge when his judgment is impaired? I'm getting off the point, man, I respect you, but I don't believe your administration is being favorable to minorities. We don't even have a swimming pool. When I came up in Belleville in 1968, one of my best memories was going to a Belleville swimming pool. Yes, man. I don't even have a swimming pool for my kids. I have to go to Collinsville. They're taxing us now with the trash and sewer bill. You gotta pay $25 for every room you- You gotta pay twenty-five dollars for every room you leave. I had a case where police officers came to my business, I'm an African-American businessman, harassed my ten-year-old son, had him injured. I went to Sparkler, he reprimanded dogs, gave him a day off. Same, about a month later, I had some problems when I beat some odd kids and he took them to the corner.
You're inter- you're inter- anecdotal, you're telling stories.
No, no, let me just say one more thing before closing here, Mr. Kenzal. I have officers over here who harass me strictly because I'm African-American, write me tickets, and that's not right. If we're gonna validate some kind of housing, let's get some minorities involved here. Let's show that we can all work together, and that we can move forward collectively as a community. Thank you for your time. God bless you.
Thank you. Yes?
Hope I'm the last one. We need, we need this to pass, and I don't know about this black-white stuff.
Your name and address, please.
Tammy Dash, seven-eleven, East McKinley. I don't care if you're frickin' green. I don't wanna walk out my door and know that two doors from me, there are kids that live there that are sticking guns in my neighbor's head, which happened. A gentleman was hit in the head with a brick, and they had to go, he had to go to the hospital. This was in my neighborhood. My neighbors were broke into, they were robbed. This is what I lived next to. Prior to that, I lived next to a drug house. They got rid of that. Right now, I'm living two, three doors from gang-related activities. I don't wanna live like that. Nobody wants to live like that. And I am at all in favor of this passing. However you have to pass it, I don't care. I want it passed, because I don't wanna live like this. I don't wanna live in fear. And I don't care if you're green.
Is there anyone else? Yes?
My name is Anna Crissant. I live at seventeen North Thirty-seventh.
Could you repeat your name, please?
Anna Crissant.
Thank you.
My problem is that it's not just people that own rental property, what about the people that own the houses and have drug problems, and people from that house are doing robberies and things? It's not only rental. I, I live in a duplex, I rent the other side. I watch that things aren't climbing. But there are things that go around, I live behind Antique House Lounge. Those people come out drinking, and they're urinating out in the public. I call the police, by the time police come, of course, well, they're done. But it is not only the rental. It is also people that own the houses. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to comment? All right, fine, uh, yes, sir.
Patty Grady, we're talking to the mayor. Roger Wigginton, eighty-twenty-one, West Main, Belleville. Belleville business owner for thirty-seven years. My set my kids a school here in Belleville. Co-chair of the West Belleville Promotional Committee. Okay, you've heard the testimonial, you've been going through this for a year. This comes down to the council. Everybody on this council is elected by their constituents. Your constituents are telling you, and I know, because I'm very, very involved in the city. I sit on six boards and committees, besides running a business six days a week. I know what's going on in this town, I know what's going on in West Belleville. You're elected by your constituents, they're telling you how to vote, and they're telling you they want this crime-free ordinance. This city, right now, is on the balance. We can either move forward and all be on the same page, have the police department, housing and landlords on the same page, or we're gonna be dead in the water. The cities around us have enacted this. We had, we had a voluntary program. It did work. In a perfect world, it would be wonderful if every landlord maintained their properties. It's just not gonna happen. Collinsville's crime rate has dropped thirty percent in the last couple of years. There was an article in the newspaper two weeks ago, how the landlords are so happy that there is teeth in these leases and that the police department is backing them. This is the right thing to do. In West Belleville, we are fighting the fight. We have properties on Main Street that are not maintained, they're deportable, the housing values of these people that live next door aren't worth two cents. And again, for these landlords that are, and, and you know, are we gonna run the city on the two percent of the people who don't care? Are we gonna run the city on the ninety-eight percent of the people who work here, live here, volunteer? We have a great volunteer spirit, that's why we're at All American City. And if we send our kids to school here, can we pay our taxes? I had a guest column in Sunday's paper, if you've read it, a lot of these people brought up today, what I had that guest column. People have a right to live in this city. We are a, this county seat, we have a constant influx of people, but these people have a right to live in peace, in clean atmospheres, not have to worry about what's going on down the hall, or next door, or whatever the case might be. What about those people? Are we gonna run this city on the one or two percent of the people who don't care? The Alterman Committee has got to look into their hearts, you've gotta use common sense. It's your responsibility to pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna come up to the, uh...
We'd like you to, so you can be on the record. I'm sorry, but we ask everyone to speak into the microphone. I know, like, a lot of us don't like microphones, but we'd like to get it on the record.
My name is Rafi Dovian. I work in and around the St. Louis area for a pretty good-sized company. But what I see mostly here today are people that are concerned. I'm concerned because I live across the street from an apartment complex that this man, I didn't tell you, Mr. Brown, I think this is your community, maybe you can talk to him. His name is Dale Helly, okay? He lives in Shiloh. And he doesn't care about his two properties, Forest Hills or Rob Nora, that have gone in the shitter and are not basically being attended to. But that's not what I wanna bring up. What I want the city to be concerned about, if you pass the crime-free housing, here's a couple of things you can do. IKEA is moving into St. Louis. They are very large national computer operation. They're gonna bring jobs into the community in St. Louis. And what I'm getting at is, they're gonna bring young people in who are gonna be looking for housing. You pass the crime-free housing, we have the schools, we've got cheap housing, we go to them, to the register at St. Louis University, we bring people into our community, we upgrade housing. When we upgrade housing, we can go ahead and get the kind of tenants we want. Without it, we are dying on the bomb. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to comment? Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is John Moser. I've been in the rental business in Belleville for the last forty years. I have no problem with the crime-free ordinance coming in, but I think what has to happen is, the city, the alterman, have gotta work with the landlords, who take care of their property like me. The management companies that don't take care of their property need to be addressed and be taken care of, and not, not, not gonna take any kind of, anything out of us. And also, we, I have had to register all of my properties and myself every year for the last ten years, and I also have everything registered. Then the tenants, when you get an occupancy permit, you have all of their information. So, charging the other twenty-five dollars is, if it helps, fine. And you also have two policemen assigned now to the housing office that are taking care of the housing problems. So, you know, I don't know if you need more people or not. I guess, maybe not in housing, but maybe the rest of the city. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to comment? Thank you, Arthur. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, when, when your committee does their discussion, would you educate us a little bit on what the current laws are for evicting, and how do you see this changing that process?
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we're closing the public hearing, and we're, well, we're still actually in session with our, our committee. Are there any points from the committee members, would you like to make some comments or something?
We need to respond to some of the...
Yes, let's see.
Well, and my name's Kevin Bausen, I own the property, I have ranch property around Belleville, and in certain towns that have crime-free housing. So a couple of things to clarify. You're not gonna get a call from the officer at two AM, and they say, you better start the eviction tomorrow morning. You're gonna get a real instant form that's gonna, like, I just, I can look at it on my phone, you can get by mail or email, but they will have that out to you the following morning, or on Monday morning. You can look at that, you can decide with them, the police officer, that one or can use the crime-free department that's your liaison, to figure out what you need to do. It could just be that the officer says, you know, I, I think we need to monitor the situation. It could be that the officer says, let's go down and talk, or the officer will go down and talk on your behalf. In talking with Captain Gaggage of Grant City, with Captain Berger from Collinsville, where Rogers Wright, three years after crime-free housing, experienced thirty percent less crime, a lot of times it saves us landlords, as we had me recently in O'Fallon, from an eviction, because the tenant that I thought was good, ran to him for several years, turned out to have problems, found out they were on the radar now. And someone that's gonna terrorize my building, or cripple the neighborhood, doesn't like to be on the radar, they like to fly under the radar. So actually, in my case, O'Fallon's fifty dollars a year, we cut it down to twenty-five, we cut it down to half of that. The officers we have right now in the voluntary program are shared with zoning, so we don't even have, we actually are gonna have dedicated officers now, which is what we need, and more of them. I actually see this as a tool-saving thing, if the tenant hears they're under eviction, and they know that the police knows what's going on. Chances are, they're not gonna stay for a full eviction. You may just have served the five-day notice, which is free for a landlord to do, and you can even post the five-day yourself. So I actually see where, this is actually gonna save me a lot of money, it has already this year, which should offset the twenty-five dollars per year.
Thank you. Somebody else have a comment on the committee? Yes, John?
I'm John Mason. I'm also a landlord in Belleville on this committee. We put a lot of thought, and we've made lots of changes, we've got a lot of advice on putting it together. I'm not gonna tell you it's perfect. I do think it's a very good start, and that's part of why we wrote in there the Oversight Committee, so that we can make course corrections as it goes down the road on this thing. The idea is to team the landlords, the property managers, the rental owners, with the city of Belleville, and with the police, to look at the situations and track what's going on. And if it becomes out of hand or inappropriate, then we've got a teaming effort about how we're going to handle it. It will require extra work on our police officers to be trained, but they need to be trained to understand what crime-free housing is. The crime-free, the rental incident form that Kevin mentioned a little bit ago is already happening, and I also get that, and I love it. And one of the things that we wrote in there was very specific, that regardless of the call, that rental incident form needs to be filled out. They've been doing that for my properties, and the good part of it is, I had one of the, one of my tenants called and reported a bicycle being stolen. There was a form filled out. Obviously, that form's not held against him, because he reported a bicycle being stolen, big deal. Two weeks later, another tenant, just two doors down, reported a lawnmower stolen. That didn't count either, big deal, we lost his landmark. But over a period of about four or five weeks, I had three or four incidents where things were being stolen. I was able to go to the housing people and say, hey, let's track this. So it, it can be used for the good part of things, too. It's not just necessarily the bad part. It can be used for the good part, too. Part of the Oversight Committee is to track the monies collected by the city and expensed by the city that are in support of this program. It's probably fair to say that there's a shortage of trust on how public entities spend money these days. And so, that's one of the reasons we wrote that in there, to watch and track, to make sure that the monies being collected are actually being spent on the police support, the police vehicles, administrative support for the program. We believe that that can be done for twenty-five dollars per unit per year. If that turns out to be a little too little, we may have to make a judgment. If it's too much, we may have to look at that, too. Some of this involves computer system upgrades, which aren't, that services all of Belleville and all the police, so we said, no, we won't factor that into our costs, 'cause that's something that budget should pay for. We were very critical, when we looked at these costs, to keep them as inexpensive as we could, while still achieving the objective of a process that teams everybody together to create better behaving neighbors and tenants for everybody. It's gonna be tough, I know that. But I do believe we've got a good start. The other thing that I wanna point out on this, and the committee was very emphatic about this, there's a sunset clause on this, twenty-seventeen. If it doesn't work, we really need to question whether it's continued. If we don't see the reduction in crime, and the tweaks that the committee makes have no effect, then it really needs to be called into question as to whether this ordinance should be extended or not. But we wrote the, we wrote that in there very specifically, to protect everybody, to keep it going. We did not want this to be a fundraiser for the city to use for whatever they want.
Thank you. I would like everyone to go to thirty-three, three dash sixteen. My copy, it's on page seven. Thirty-three, three dash sixteen. And it's file reporting of activity at rental units. A rental incident form shall be created by the responding officer on every call to a rental unit. Now, I thought that this was brought up, but we have talked with the chief, and the chief says that it will be on every criminal call. For instance, if they're asking, they're, they're coming to someone's rental unit, and they're asking if they know the guy down the street, did they see anything, that would not be an incident form. And I thought that this was worked out, I'm kinda surprised to see this still in here. Chief, would you like to clarify what you would like in there?
I'm glad you brought that up, because we did talk about that, and if we go to, sometimes we go to a place, and we just have to do a notification, just to let somebody know to contact the hospital, because they'll have a loved one in the hospital, and we go by. This provision says, we do a rental list on that. That, we have over five thousand rental units, I believe, in Belleville, maybe more. You're gonna have officers sitting at their little computers, just typing out rental incident forms on everything that comes up. So when we talked, at the group we talked about, I said, you know, you've gotta make sure that we stay focused on crime, criminal activity. This is not something that we wanna report on, on everything we may go by. We knock on the door, just like you said, ask, is, is this person live here? But this, this place is pegged as requiring a rental incident form, they give us some information, we say, thank you. We don't generate report on that, but we generate report that I went by and knocked on the door and asked if this person lived here. When you have it like that, shell create, then those officers, well, we gotta, we gotta do a rental list. So I, I, I thought we had had that, I had that circled, I mean, highlighted, to bring that to you guys' attention, that that has to be associated with criminal activity.
Yes, we, we did talk about it with the mayor and the attorney, but I don't think it got to the committee, and I think the committee will really wanna look at that. And, Mr. Marner, how would you suggest wording that, so we can get done what the chief is saying, and we don't have it on all?
I suggested it be raised, the rental incident form, R I F, may be created by the responding police officer on every call related to, every call to a rental unit related to criminal activity. That would give them both the discretion, and it would, it would restrict it to criminal activity.
Okay. All right, this is, this is something that our committee has not had a chance to digest and work through. That's why I wanted to break it up right now, so that we can see how the committee feels. how the committee feels. Here we go. Yes?
Would you, would Chief, please explain to us, how do you please know whether, whether going as a rental unit?
Chief, would you like to respond to that? How do you know it's a rental unit? She asked, she, excuse me, I'll, I'll put it on the microphone, thank you. She asked, when you show up at a residence, how do you know it's a rental unit or not?
If there is, if we...
If you're called to a residence, and what, how do you know? It would be under the...
If it's a rental incident form...
How do you know how to fill it out? How do you know if you come to her house as a rental or not, or if you come to her house as a rental?
Here's what it is right now, the way that the voluntary program that we have established, we have criteria on the form, and it tells officers and dispatch people, first of all, if they go to a place that's a voluntary member of our crime-free housing program now, it will prompt the dispatcher to advise the officer how a rental incident form will be required. And so the officer goes in and takes the, handles the case. If it is something where a tenant is the victim of a burglary, or they have a phone harassment complaint, somebody's calling them from another location, that's a better way to use it, but it's actually, it's a, it's a, it's a criminal call, but they're just a victim and somebody's calling from someplace else, well, that doesn't require a rental incident form, there's nothing there that's happening on those premises that, that would prompt that officer to, to, you know, complete that form. So, it, it requires a little bit of common sense, if you will, you have to know what a crime is and what is not a crime. And so every time we go out and we talk to somebody on a situation, we come to your place, and you wanna tell us about something that's happening over in another neighborhood or somebody around us doing something, you're just reporting a crime. You're just a person saying, hey, please, this is happening. Well, we don't look at you and say, yeah, and by the way, let me have your name in, in your, as, so I can put this down, so I can generate a rental incident form, shoot to your landlord, and say that you called the police. And you can get, so we don't do that. It's strictly on, if we come off, there is a disturbance, there is a crime occurring, you're involved in it, or somebody that is at your place is involved in it, be it domestic, be it battery, whatever that may be, criminal damage to property, we will address those issues with a rental incident form and let the landlords know the very next day by email, I think we do most of it by email, of what is occurring.
And this part of our other question was, how are we gonna know, once we get everybody registered, it'll be in the system?
Well, with the records management system and our CAD system that we're putting in place right now, the officers in their mobile CAD systems will be able to see on their screen that a rental incident form is required, they'll have it, I guess that was the other part of your systems, of your question. So they will have that information, whereas now, they're prompted by the dispatcher, they will be able to see the screen that the dispatcher has, and they will know that there is a rental incident form required, and they'll complete that form if necessary.
I, I, yes, sir?
So Chief, let me try to understand, so with this new system, then, as it's going, as a call is dispatched out to the officer, and they're going to one, two, or three Main Streets, say, that will tell them that this is a rental unit, or this is a owner's...
It will, it will tell them...
Ten fourteen West Washington Riley will show up as owner occupied.
Right. What it will tell them is if it is a rental unit, it will tell them and it will say that a rental incident form may be required at this location. So what, there will be nothing, if it's, if it's a owner occupied premises, then nothing will, will prop on the screen, we're gonna put in the database for the, for rental units. So that'll be on the CAD system, and the officers will actually be able to see that themselves.
Will, will this system then be able to also tie in to the housing department?
Yes.
To where... One, one, two, three Main Streets supposed to have three people, mom, dad, and son, and they will be able to know who mom, dad, and son is, so if they show up there and it's obvious?
Right. I was talking to the director of housing, Bob Sable, and I said, exactly, I was telling him, I said, when we get the system up and running, I said, some of the things that we're gonna be able to do that we cannot do now, I said, we'll have you tied into these systems so that I, I can, if he has some information or we have to have occupants in the room and that kind of stuff, we can actually bring that up. We're also going, not just a mobile CAD system, but you know, we're also developing our records management system, that's gonna come online. That will provide even more information that we don't, presently don't have, we don't have records management system. That's in the works, we're hoping to run live on that, I believe, I don't know a lot to you. By November fifteenth, we'll see if we're ready to go on that, so it's gonna take some work from now on. I would say we're really up and running, it's probably gonna be about the first of January. We'll be able to tie those, that deficiencies of both of those systems, and when we enter that information once, it'll be entered on all the databases that it needs to be entered. So we will have their information.
I want to, if I may, Mr. Chairman, on, on this computer information, and I'm certainly not the most astute one, maybe our treasurer could help, but are these, are, are they, or what do we need to do? There's gotta be a way with today's technology, with this RIF form, that if they're called one, two, three Main Street, and they're gonna have to do that form, that, you know, if these officers get there, that if we're gonna do a, a RIF on one, two, three Main Street, that, you know, the name, the address, and hopefully that stuff can be entered, and into that form, because, because my biggest concern is, and I certainly support this, but I certainly share your concern, Chief, that I don't want my officers sitting there typing all day on form, I want them back out there looking for the bad guys. The only thing they need to fill out is that little space in there of what actually happened.
Here's, what we work with now is our CHH, so we have to generate forms, and we do them ourselves, we create our own forms, we print them and so forth, we email. And you're absolutely right about this, and this sort of, it sort of got by me because I don't be thinking about this, but the records management system and the way that we do our, our rental incident form will change dramatically. So you are absolutely right. It'll be a system that, that when the officer brings up this, this, this system and puts in that form, it will be done, it will, it will go to whoever it has to go to instantly, that form will be done. So yes, right now, we're actually typing on a, on a document that we create, and we email it to somebody, and it goes, right. We, that's all gonna change with a records management system and mobile CAD system, we don't have that right now. So it will get very easy for us to do it, and very efficient, we just don't have that ability right now.
And you're comfortable then with that, and keeping it to, basically, that there is some form of criminal activity that we recall out here, that this is not gonna overwhelm our police as far as, again, you know, I don't want, I don't want the attorney into doing so much administrative stuff or type, and we certainly don't want, you know, you know, I was called to the house because somebody complained about this, and it turns out to be, you know, irrelevant or, or nonexistent, because we are gonna, and we brought this, Mr. Chairman, up before, you know, we gotta be careful, us as aldermen, and dealt with this, and certainly you, Chief, we unfortunately have neighbors that sometimes don't like neighbors. And, and we don't need this system to be abused and used as a means that, okay, I don't like this neighbor, so I'm just gonna keep calling the police on him, you know, we, we gotta have a system that either, that does two things. One, doesn't certainly hurt the person who's being called in against erroneously, and secondly, find a way that's gonna prohibit these people from making these erroneous calls.
And I absolutely agree with that. We, we wanna have a system that is effective, that is reliable, and so the officers are not relieved of their responsibility to investigate a call. If it is unfounded, it's unfounded. I mean, and so we have...
No need for a report.
Right, there's no need for a report, and there will be no report generated merely because you made the call, and we'll go out. And, and this is a system, or, or crime-free, like a lot of different, you know, things that they have in place, or reporting on people, or dealing, people can get you in trouble if they want to. They say, well, I just called and say you did this. But they wanna get the police to their call faster, they'll call and say, I think I heard shots fired. We did that, and then people call because now they wanna, they want lights and sirens, they wanna say it. Then we get there, well, I, I didn't really hear that, and then we get that we have them on, on tape. And, and so people do those kinds of things, and you're gonna have people that will try to abuse it, because I don't like you, we're having a few, we're going back and forth, so I'll, I'll call on you.
I, I think, Chief, looking at this, not only from, from the crime-free housing effect that we're all trying to gain, I think it's gonna help you administrate it, because your officers are constantly sometimes engaged in these neighborhood squabbles, and certainly you, as Chief, and the city attorney, the prosecutors, I think these people that are, that are making some of these erroneous calls, eventually they can tie it into false police reports, and they can do something to put them in for some of this ridiculous stuff to go by.
We have, I'm sorry, you can...
Yes.
Okay. We have two committee members who have motioned that they'd like to have input in this. Treasurer Dean Harner is first.
Tag along Lordan Hayden's comments, but I do have concerns. One of the questions I have would be, can it be at the discretion of the landlord as to what level of criminal activity would be determined as to when you get a RIF form filled out? Because just as Kevin had alluded to, or stated in his story, was the fact of the, or no, it was John, about the bike being stolen, then the lawnmower being stolen. You know, I'm not, I'm not sure at what level does it, does that institute a RIF, because he's already being contacted now at that level. Some may want it to be something more substantial than simply a bike being stolen, others may want maybe even a lower threshold.
We won't have a system like that, that's not sustainable, it's not doable. The city attorney, and when we talked, and we met with the mayor and so forth, we sit down and we looked at a way to try to address, how do you address what criminal activity should be reported? And I think that he had a very novel approach to it, is that we would approach it with felony level calls for service, and/or Class A misdemeanors. But that, folks, that's what that has to mean. And so we can't have, I, I wanna get people on, on Class C, I wanna get them on Class B, I wanna do these types of things, these are lower level misdemeanors with lower levels fines and so forth. We have limited resources as, as any city or any department. So I, I think the way that we wanna approach it is on a serious misdemeanors and felony level offense. The, I was reading the HUD guide on occupancy for public housing and so forth, looking at a lot of them, you know, the way that they define these things, and HUD with public housing, and public housing authorities, their, their, their crime-free component is, is, is a lot more nebulous than ours. It actually just says criminal activity, abusing alcohol, or these kind of things will get you kicked out of public housing in America today. They have, if you affect the, the health and safety and welfare of the tenants in the community, what does that mean? But that is in the landing book there. I think we have a more concise and clearer way of approaching with a, with felonies and, and Class A misdemeanors. Now, you guys, we're gonna meet every six months, whatever this group is, it's put together, and maybe you come back after that six months and say, you know what, I think we wanna address some of those kinds of issues. Maybe that's something you're gonna do. But right now, the police department is sort of at Class A misdemeanors and felony level offenses.
Thank you.
Well, and I was, and I was just thinking, I love to hear the little thing that happens, but I think at the beginning of this program, the first six months, we just need to focus on, you know, the big things that are, people are worried about here. And as far as Mr. Hayden was talking about, on the form, we compare the RIF forms, the rental incident forms all over, we added into action taken, and we also put action recommended, which means that the officer may not type it all out, but they'll recommend you to contact the police the next business day through the crime-free office, and then have a meeting to where you can get into detail what's going on, so that officer can get the basics, quote, fill out the rental, get going, and then later on. So that, that's what we're hoping to, if I keep it short.
Okay. Yes, oh, ladies and gentlemen, you may, may be asking yourselves, why is he allowing some people to talk and ask questions and not others? These are aldermen, okay? And I'm being a little liberal with them, yes? I'm so generous.
My question has to do with both the committee and the city attorney for that matter. When you take a look at the other communities that have impacted crime-free ordinances, what do we know about those ordinances being contested and what the outcome's like?
I'm not aware of any of your ordinances locally being contested, nor any of the several that are, that are existing in the Chicagoland area. A lot of the suburbs of Chicago haven't implemented this, nor am I aware that the statutes that already allow landlords to take these types of actions have been challenged. There's always statutes, and the chief had indicated when we recommended that it be pared back from, from an all-encompassing approach like HUD takes, and the chief is exactly right, HUD takes an approach where it's any criminal activity, and that's in their lease attendant, and that's cause for termination. But we, the discussion that the chief recounted, we decided to take the approach that already exists in the, in the always statutes, and that is defining it as a felony and a Class A misdemeanor, and, and I'm not aware of any challenges to, to those statutory provisions either.
Okay, if we're still on the topic of police officer on every call, I have a new wording from the attorney, and this is thirty-three dash three sixteen, it says, "A rental incident form, RIF, may be created by," it says, "may be created by the responding police officer on a call to a rental unit related to criminal activity at or near that rental unit." I'll go back over it, I know the first part's probably almost word for word. "A rental incident form, RIF, may be created by the responding police officer on a call to a rental unit related to criminal activity at or near that rental unit." Do you remember, should we go over it again? Yeah, okay. Now, this is something that we, we have not really talked about, so we have to have some input.
I was, so if policeman is called out for loud music in this whole start, if policeman is called out for loud music to a rental unit, then there would be no incident form called out, filled out then? That will come up?
That does not, that's not Class A misdemeanor, that is something that we will handle either with somebody deciding to complain, or with the police department doing what they were willing to do in those kind of situations, like make contact, issue a warning, or do whatever we do, because those are not gonna, those kinds of events don't trigger the, the process that you have covered here, of getting somebody out of the property or starting a eviction procedure, that is not at that level. A Class A misdemeanor, felony, those that you have covered there. So, there is no reason then for us as a police agency to sing that tune, that, that, you know, I mean, we're not asking you to do anything, but, again, what I am suggesting to you, strongly suggesting and recommending, is that you keep it at the level that it is right now, and you try this out, and we see how this works, when we're actually dealing with five thousand rental units, and see just how much work this is gonna be, how effective we're gonna be at. and see just how much work this is gonna be, how effective we're gonna be at this, and how many actual reports being generated, even at the felony or misdemeanor level. I think we have to get a real view of what's going on. If you put something in place that we can't reasonably enforce, that's, you might as well not do this thing. Do it with something that I think is reasonable, is able to surround offices. And all of them don't work at the same time. So you're gonna have ten to twelve offices out on the street enforcing this. Let's see how it works at this level. And then if we come back and say, "We think we can do a little more, it's not generating this much. We want to know about disturbances of so-and-so on our properties." Then perhaps we can address it at that time. The way it worked with the volunteers is because we had so few, we were able to basically generate a rental incident form for basically most of the events that occurred on this, we let them know. But when you get five thousand people, you gotta, you gotta get a different foot for that, how to approach this.
John, did you have a question?
Yes, Chief, I understand your position on your standards. However, as a landlord, there's real benefit for me to know if there is a disturbance of sorts. Because a disturbance where you guys call it, you go out and tell the attorney to write down several times, and we don't hear about it, is nothing. However, if we do get the rental form about it, it gives us that, the rental incident form, it does give us that opportunity to address it with that tenant saying, "This is unacceptable and it needs to stop now." Two more of these or three more of these in the next six months, and we're going to start eviction process.
Disturbance is a very generalized word.
I realize that it is.
If it's a level of disturbance that's battery, mob action, or something like that, you guys are gonna be criticized. If it's a drunken tenant that turns out and they have a shout, a few words with some people, and there's no exchange, there's no threats, there's nothing, they come out and settle it, and the person goes back in, that's a different level of disturbance. It might be a disturbance or classified as disturbance, but it's really not to that level that I, that, well, I'm just looking at what the ordinance says. And so I want to, as a police chief, and have my troops go into this in a way that they don't rebel against this. But let me tell you, that's a lot of that. If it's generating a lot of paperwork and they don't see a benefit, and then you, they have to buy into this thing. And if you've got them doing a lot of things and they don't see a benefit, and something else suffers. And I don't want other things to suffer. I have requirements of them now as far as activities, and out on patrol, or what to do, so many stops and doing other things. I think that we have to balance this out. I'm telling you guys, we need to balance this out. We need to approach it the way it is right now and take a look at this in six months.
I think our city attorney has made it.
Yeah, I was thinking, and I've had, we've had a lot of discussions with the chief and the mayor and Alderman Selma about this. And because there is a component on the four ordinance violations with a six-month period, would it be, and I think it's important that the police department have discretion in enforcing all the ordinances. That's really what I'm saying. Would it be reasonable and maybe something that would satisfy everybody if there was a rental incident form created when it was a violation of an ordinance that would not otherwise be enforced by housing? Maybe the loud music, I guess, under certain circumstances could be a violation of the ordinance. It would leave the officer's discretion if they considered it to be something that they would deem a violation of the ordinance. They could generate a rental incident form, but it would be within their discretion.
Right. And I keep forgetting this, and I just gotta come back to our record management system is on the way. Our cat, mobile cat system is on the way. There is gonna become a point where rental forms just doesn't matter. Just the officer can get up and go and it got done. You see what I'm saying? I'm, right now, we're not there. And so when we are at that point, you know, we can look at and say, "What level do you want to take it to?" I understand that you want to have information on a problem tenant who is disturbed, is pissed, is drinking, is shouting, doing all these kind of things. But it doesn't rise to the level of necessarily criminal activity, but it rises to the level of disturbance and causes problems. And you can lose tenants as a result of that. I don't want to get, I don't want to necessarily get into trying to make sure that, you know, your lease, the lease regulations or so forth that you have that's outside of the scope of criminal activity. I don't want to get too far in that. But disturbances, disorderly conduct, which are necessarily not a Class A misdemeanor, those are things that I think that we will be able to address relatively easy when we have the software and the hardware to do so. We just simply don't have that right now. That's just, that's the nature of peace. But that's coming our way, we will be able to do that. And if you guys say, "We want, let's go to this level." We want to have you guys notice that we can do that.
How are we wording then? Are we keeping the wording we already said?
Could, excuse me, could it be something where if you did, you took action against the tenant? You know, because you're saying written warning or citation, you know, it's not to Class A misdemeanor or to the felony, but you're still putting them on notice, I guess you could say, with an MTC? You know, and say, "Hey, you guys feel like an MTC here for a while, bro?"
Some of the, he's actually heading up in arrest. It's just not a Class A misdemeanor. So I understand what you guys are saying. Some of it is a written warning, some of them we actually arrest people on these things. That's just a lower level, we give them a notice to appear. That stops it before we write a written warning or wherever, we take a man on the city ordinance and get him to get sober. Then we release him on a notice to appear. So I understand, that's actually criminal activity, but at that level of a B or C misdemeanor. And so we're gonna still do our written warnings, still do the things we do, we still address it. It's just a matter of notification to you guys. And all I'm saying is that I don't have a problem in the future, when we're ready to put our little fancy system in play, if you guys actually want us to do that, we can do that.
I did ask the attorney, and he said the wording we have here is sufficient. Yes, John, did you, oh, I'm sorry.
I think the one thing Jared mentioned is now, we gave some, period of consideration to this. And I think we keep saying it, we gotta try it, we're gonna have to massage it. But I think one of our concerns is we wanted to follow the criminal, felony, and Class A misdemeanor. We felt to get this thing off the ground and to make sure we were on good solid footing with the challenges that some are saying are out there, but survive in the cities. We feel, attorney feels that would be the best of the study.
Essentially, what this ordinance requires of the landlords is to exercise rights they already have under the statute. The, in the FED article, the eviction article, section nine dash one twenty already provides that if somebody permits or allows or, and I can actually tell you. "If any of us senior occupant on more and more occasions uses or permits the use of the lease premises for the commission of any act that would constitute a felony or a Class A misdemeanor under the laws of the state, the lease or rental agreement shall, the option of the lessor, where the lessor's assigning become void and owner or lessor shall be entitled to recover possession of the lease premises as against the tenant holding over after the expiration of his or her term." So basically what's happening is that it already provides for this type of mechanism. We're just asking, requiring in this ordinance that's proposed, that they exercise their legal rights. And that can be done in a lease addendum, but it's not required to be in a lease addendum. It doesn't aggregate the rights that are already afforded under that statute. And so that's really the basis for defining it as Class A or felony is it something, that's the way the General Assembly is defined it in similar circumstances. So I think it's good to be consistent with the General Assembly. And as far as, again, as the chief indicated, US HUD is already going a lot broader than that. They've, any criminal activity is how they determine in their lease addendums. And this isn't that broad, and it's gonna be better, I believe it's better defined. And it's gonna be easier to enforce.
I would like to mention that, well, I'm sorry, but right before the worship. I'm on my way to it, finish with this before I go to the next topic. Yes, John?
Could we end the wording again? Because I think that the standards that we've established are pretty cut and dry and easy to enforce. I'm still concerned about the disturbances that upset my neighbors or my tenants that I'm unaware of or undocumented in some capacity. Could we change the wording such that it says to every rental unit related to disturbances or community activity? Can we still leave the word May in there, which would accommodate the growth of your system until January-ish? When you were, when we're hoping this new system's online and it's less labor intensive? But it allows that system to come online. And once it's online, it would allow us to get the feedback of the disturbances so that we can engage before it's a real problem to try and correct. Would that be fair, sir?
So long as you maintain the discretion, and it's within your manpower capabilities, and I know that's a concern, and we see what the software allows you to do, it doesn't sound like it would necessarily bug you down if it did. That varies the discretion. So I don't see any problem with putting it in if you don't, Chief.
And Chief, let me, let me ask this question. If, I think we do this now. If a landlord comes to us, or a group of neighbors come to us about a specific property that's becoming a real nuisance, even though it might be still on the lower level, but it's become repeated, it's become to my office's attention, your office's attention, you looking up on the GAD, and yeah, there's been a lot of calls there. Hasn't been a lot of stuff generated because it hasn't met that, met that felony threshold or that Class A threshold. That still doesn't mean that we're not going to pow-wow with the landlord, or the neighbors, or with the special units we have, like we're doing now, and trying to effectively get in and eradicate something before it gets out of hand. We will still do that. But I think what we're just saying is, we've gotta walk before we run. But in the meantime, if you have reason to believe that there's some behavior that's starting to take shape that you're really worried about, this officer or these officers or, as you go up the steps here in the command, we're gonna listen and we're gonna, we're gonna listen to the benefit of the doubt and do what we can to stop something. We want safer, cleaner neighborhoods, and we want people to want to live here. So I don't think, John, if your concern is, not that we're not gonna work with you, but I think what the chief's trying to say, and we heard the chief very clearly, we've gotta get this new record system up and running and totally everybody used to it before that we try to do all things for all people. Because we've gotta be realistic, this cannot take us backwards far as burdensome this. It's gotta be, it's gotta slowly make it. But I think we're gonna get to where you want to go.
I, I, Mr. Mayor, I completely agree. I just want to make sure we accommodate the expectation that once we're there, that will happen. And that's, that's what I'm trying to do.
Would you repeat your wording again, please?
Just where it says, "Call to a rental unit related to disturbances or criminal activity at or near that unit."
So we're adding disturbances?
Or.
Or?
In front of the word criminal activity.
Between two and criminal, okay.
Correct.
That's...
That may get disruptive. May is still in there?
Yes.
Yeah, May is still in there. May is still in there.
Okay, is, are we, do we have consensus on this point?
Well, read it again, please, for me.
The entire thing?
Well, the rental incident.
A rental incident form, RIF, may be created by the responding police officer on a call to a rental unit related to disturbances or criminal activity at, at or near that rental unit. Very good. If we've reached consensus on that point, I would like to go back to something that all the men told to ask to have us explain how this affects eviction. And I think, Kevin, you came pretty close to hitting on that point. Would you talk about the lease addendum?
Well, you know, I guess it kind of goes even back to people, you know, if you're renting when you want to, we ask you that you sign off that you are doing a background check. And by law, there are certain offenders that cannot reside in a partner of yours or home too close to a school, and that can be found out, which is good. You know, you get a history of the person, you always want to, they've incurred a lot of histories, your rental history, your credit, criminal. Basically, at the same time, when you're signing the lease and you decide to rent to that person, you go over point blank, here's what is expected of you. And you got my rules, now you know the city of Belleville, police department rules. You know that we have rental incident forms, and they have to sign off on that. Or at least, yeah, right.
The lease specifically spells out that if you break these rules, it's first time that you're susceptible.
I wasn't fully what I was asking. What I'm asking is, I thought there were laws about how much notice you have to give them, when the sheriff can come, when you can take the wrong.
Well, yeah, you still follow due process, which starts with, like I, like I answered earlier, I have followed criminals with Crime Free Housing. I don't have to even go do a five-day notice. I'm able to talk with the tenant with my rental incident form in my hand and say, "Talk to the Crime Free Officer about what happened last night. What do you think?" Sometimes they can say, "Yeah, we just really, we really shouldn't be living here anymore. We'll be out ten days, we already paid up this month." Sometimes it's to where, "You know what? You're right, should have had that party, my friends' friends' friends." And it's nipped in the bud. Other times, another rental incident report, and now that party had drugs at that. So at any point, the landlord still needs to do the five-day notice. But normally, the tenant, when they know that, when you appear on the front doorstep the day after a party and there's still several people there, normally, between the officer, the tenant, the landlord, they're pretty much able to figure out the future of that, that tenant doesn't want to stay there, they won't get their party broken up too. They have a lifestyle that's not gonna work here in the city of Belleville. If they want to stay and there's more crime and more rental incident forms, then you have to start the five-day notice. And you cannot take that to get filed till the sixth day in the courts, just like you would for not payment of rent. It's pretty much reminders they're treated as if they had not paid rent. So you have to follow the same due process.
Yes, sir.
Chairman, I'd like to go back just for a second and let our city attorney address one aspect of domestic violence. Earlier this evening before this meeting, he and I met with the executive director of the Domestic Violence Organization here in Belleville. I think we satisfied a lot of her questions, and she was here for a little while left because she told me, told us that she was very, very happy with what she learned and had some misconceptions. And Jared, you want to touch on a couple of those things? I think it'll all clear up a little bit.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There was a provision that was already in a draft, the first draft that I looked at, but we, in discussing it with some of the members of the task force, we decided to move it up. So it was more prominent. And so under the purpose section, there's a, the last sentence states unequivocally that it is not the intent of this ordinance and it shall not be construed or enforced in any manner which would affect the tenancy of a tenant who is only developing an incident and has been as the victim of a crime. So, and we discussed this with the chief, that the city is not going to enforce this as against people who are only the victim. It's really about the nature, it's about the crime and the perpetrator of the crime. Now, within the, and I'm gonna go back to the little process, and this may, this may help assist with Alderman Holt's question. This ordinance is enforced against the landlord or the management company. It's the lessor. The less these rights aren't impaired, the less these rights are under the law in the action that has to be initiated by the landlord under this provision. See, what this, what this ordinance requires of the landlord is that they, over here. They're only a violation if they fail to take prompt, diligent, and lawful steps to remove the tenant from possession of the rental. to remove the tenant from possession of the rental unit if they get notice that they committed or allowed or permitted the commission of a felony or misdemeanor or for ordinance violations in a six-month period. And this is the landlord's responsibility then to take that action. And you outlined the methods, and sometimes it'll fall short, but they can go forward if the tenant wanted to go forward and defend eviction case over there. I would consider it to be highly unlikely, except in the instance where if it is somebody who thinks they have a defense based on the fact that they're a victim of domestic violence or other criminal violence, there's a provision within the FED article that gives them affirmative defenses of that nature. That's why if you look down on the, in the due process area, we do have significant administrative due process here for the landlords and managing agents before their registration would be impaired. They get a hearing. They have an opportunity to put on evidence. And in particular, with the issue of the domestic violence, there is in there, we put in a provision that said, notwithstanding any contrary provision here, and the owner, landlord, or managing agent may invoke a hearing in affirmative defense set forth in Section 9-106.2 of the Illinois Code of Civil Procedure. So, the same defenses that a victim of violence would have in the eviction proceeding, the landlord can raise in their hearing. So it's not intended, this bolsters the city's position that it's not intended to displace a victim of domestic or other types of violence. So they can, they can raise that, just like the victim did in the eviction case. There's another provision in that area that some concern brought up, another subpart of that statutory section that gives the landlord the power to bar the perpetrator if the perpetrator is not a tenant or a lessee, or who is not a member of the tenant or lessees' household. And we cite that in there because, in the interest of safety, if the perpetrator is not part of the household, and the perpetrator is not in any way a tenant there, the city desires that the landlord exercise their right to bar them from the property. And that is their right under the statute already. And in doing so, if that individual returns, they'd be subject to prosecution for trespass, but it does not displace the victim or the household. So I think that was something that's, I think, based on our conversation before the meeting, satisfied the executive director of the Center for Violence Prevention. So, we did, we did review the information that was provided by the gentleman who spoke earlier tonight from the Missouri Youthful Opportunity Department. We did review the information provided by the Schreiber Center, and we did what we thought accommodates them. And we believe that this is enforceable under the law based upon what Delaware law currently is, and it's within the powers of the city. So I just wanted to point out that those areas were certainly not ignored. They were taken into account in great light, and this is what we came up with, and it satisfied those concerns.
And Mr. Chairman, just in a closing comment, I would say, that's why it took as long as it did. You know, we talked about this first of the year, and some said, oh, we're trying to rush it to get it done before the election. And I said that, we're gonna take as long as it needs. We wanna make sure that we have as much communication as possible and look at the letter we received and the laws, and then when I got Garrett on board as the new city attorney, he's the guy that has to answer to this now, or work with our staff. So I wasn't gonna rush it until, we had several meetings, the Chief and I, and Bobby, and Garrett, and Tom Peters, who was the interim city attorney who worked with us for a while. We all sat and met several times. And we certainly take everybody's rights extremely seriously. But as many people testified here tonight or spoke, we also listened heavily to the neighbors who were trying to keep safe, solid neighborhoods and not lose the value because of a few criminal, a few places where criminal activity is starting to flourish. So we think we have an ordinance now that's gonna go, after tonight, this committee moves it forward, it would go to the Housing Committee where it started on September 4th. Is that right, Dave?
Right.
September 4th at 6:00 in this room, providing their endorsement. It would then go to the ordinance committee, which would be the proper channel for the final ordinance review and preparation on September 10th at 6:00 in this room. And then with that, if everything continues to roll in a non-stopping fashion, it'll then come to the City Council in this room on 7:00 PM on Monday, September 16th, for the final approval of the ordinance. We're being very upfront about it. We're not cutting sharp any committees. There'll still be a few more opportunities if somebody leaves here tonight with some eye-opening thoughts that still need to be addressed, but we believe that we are in the final stages of giving serious attention to this, being fair at all, and I think as we agree, feel like we need to start, get started, and then if we need to have some things tweaked, it can be done. It will be a work in progress. So I do wanna thank the committee. Mr. Chairman, I would thank you and all the committee members. This has been a much, probably longer task force than you probably originally signed up for, but you've been, worked very hard, you've been very good with your time and with your homework. There was a lot of research. I know that you had to read and study, and some of you went farther than that. You went to physically go and visit some of these places that have the crime-free ordinance, and I apologize for your efforts. So on behalf of the city, we wanna thank this group for the effort they put in. And I thank the council members who were able to be here tonight to listen and to deliberate over these comments, and to then come to the committee meetings. If you're on those committees, we need you present, certainly, and then we'll eventually get to council on the 16th, I hope.
Are there any questions from the committee members? At this time, I entertain a motion to approve this and send this on to Housing.
So moved.
Seconded by John Mason, and seconded by Dean Hart. I'm going to do a roll call vote. Dean Hart?
Aye.
Kevin Bowles?
Aye.
Linda Havlin?
Aye.
John Mason?
Aye.
Dan Norman?
Aye.
Tricia Tyldo?
Aye.
Mayor Eckert?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so it's unanimous. Ladies and gentlemen, I do have a housekeeping thing that I forgot to get to. You received the minutes. They were at your table, I think, when you got here. A motion to approve, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion to adjourn, please. Havlin, and, just a second, please. And second on that motion to adjourn? Okay, Kevin, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, Mary?